Good evening. I call for order of the City of Gerald, public hearings and regular court city council meeting Tuesday, July 1st at 7:00 PM. Chris, I'm on the agenda of the roll call. We have all members present. I'm going to have an invocation of legislative motion by Councilman Faust.
Geraldine Fother, we gather here today seeking your guidance and wisdom as we discuss these items on our agenda. Lord, we give you thanks for our citizens, our staff, and our opportunity to serve the citizens of Gerald. We pray for productive meetings where we work together with a common group of the city we all call home. Please continue to lead us in our just throughout our service and decisions. Lord, as the July 4th holiday approaches and we join to celebrate our nation's birth in the symbol of freedom it represents, we give you the thanks and acknowledgement for the ultimate freedom it represents. We ask that you continue to keep us mindful and say, "In your precious name, the Lord." Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is public comments. We do have one here. D.J. Weaver. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is D.J. Weaver. I'm an area construction manager for Style Craft Builders. We're a regional production home builder here in the state of Texas. There was just a couple of things I wanted to bring up today as possible for possible consideration on our future agenda. The first item being inspection fees. Second being water pressure. One of the communities that I oversee is in Eastern Wells, right off the highway. And from what I understand, when it comes to inspection fees, they were set by a previous administration, in that you can't do anything about the inspection fees currently. First time failures, we're receiving charges for $275 on those inspections. I just wanted to see on future agenda if we could consider possibly lowering or giving us a little bit of grace on those inspection fees. We are a regional production home builder. We're not a huge production home builder, so these fees impact us a little bit more than others. I just wanted to see if there are any room for discussion there. Secondly, water pressure. At that same community, Eastern Wells, we're currently closing homes to buyers at around 40 to 80, or at the lower end of the 40 to 80 PSI range required of us. And from my end, it seems that we've done about everything we can do to accept as much water pressure as possible. And I think you guys have as well, from what I've seen. I've heard talks that it might require a devastation or something similar to raise the water pressure. Just wanted to see if we could talk about that, see if there's been conversations around it. That's all I have. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, public hearings. We're in open a public hearing to discuss the proposed Resolution Number 2025-0701-05, Resolution Adopting 2025-2027 Tax Abatement Policies and Guidelines for the City of Gerald. Purpose of this hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on the proposed adoption of the guidelines and criteria and its implications. All interested residents, businesses, and stakeholders are encouraged to attend and participate.
May I put that over in the note?
Okay.
I'm sorry, can I read?
I will, yes. On the apple? I will. We don't have any public comments, so. Could you provide some background information as to why we're opening a public hearing?
So this is part of the requirement getting the tax abatement before the bid agreement that we want to adhere to. This is the Guidelines and Criteria Resolution that designates what criteria businesses will have to meet in order to be eligible for the abatement. So this is the policy that both the city and the EDC would be following for anybody who's seeking out an abatement. So if you look, starting on, start on page four, it goes through criteria guidelines, starting with definitions. Section B will say what types of projects are authorized and the types of property are eligible or ineligible. And section C will go through the factors that are considered.
So we don't need to make a decision on this tonight?
We were hoping you guys could, but if you have questions on the table, I'd.
We can close public hearing. We're in closed public hearing. We move on to Agenda Item 3.2, Consideration of Possible Action Regarding Resolution Number 2025-0701-05, A Resolution Adopting 2025-2027 Tax Abatement Policies and Guidelines for the City of Gerald. This resolution will support economic development initiatives that align with the city's strategic orders.
They come about, you don't have to adopt, just surround them with a meeting, or?
No, I don't think.
This has been on even for quite some time now. My understanding is it was going to be a form process, and that's what identifies the process. Mary. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-0701-05 as presented.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, unanimous. Alright, Agenda Item 3.3. We're in open a public hearing pursuant to tax code section 312.207. Section D, to discuss the proposed tax abatement agreement with the Labatt Food Services. The Labatt has agreed to construct, or cause to be constructed, a minimum of 150,000 square foot distribution warehouse establishment to be located approximately 48 acre tract of land located near the intersection I-35 South and Ronald Reagan Boulevard, in the intention to make a total combined capital investment of approximately $42 million in improvements and tangible personal property. Do not have any public comments either. We're going to close this public hearing. Agenda Item 3.4, Consideration of Possible Action Regarding the Approval of the Tax Abatement Agreement with the Labatt Food Services. With said agreement, terms, and property meet the pertinent guidelines and criteria governing tax payment and agreements. The Labatt has agreed to construct or cause to construct a minimum of 150,000 square foot distribution center, located approximately 48 acres, like mentioned before.
Mayor and Council for the disabatement agreement, there are three sections that just need some dates to fill in the blanks that I want to draw your attention to so I get your approval on before you go on it. On page five, in section 2.5, there's a date that the Labatt would need to certify and write that they're compliant with the federalizing criteria. I think you guys want to, probably somewhere in the middle of the year is what I would suggest, but it's up to you guys. Is this time sensitive to the C D? Because I'm looking at this paperwork, you were, how do you see that?
Yes, C C N is already being released by Georgetown. We accepted by, by also, we're working with a P U C filing, and these two processes can be confirmed if we must. I know S A has been working with, to submit the filing, is in very contact with, in the local, with A U S.
Is this constant?
Yeah, we would like, we would hope.
So who the dates being went blank for this guy? What's going on?
Now, we're going to have two months for the, is it two, it's going to be two months for the.
Two months for after the P U C agreement for annexation, four months after that for the zone requirements.
Thank you. And those times are realistic.
Then, uh?
Yes. And then the timeline has stated it's realistic for, for the side of you.
And then there's also section 4.2 on the same page as 4.3, on a date for them to begin construction. I have July 31st, 2027, right now, so if you guys have a question about that, that date. So for the first blank, it would be two months after the P U C transfer is complete. For the second one, for designing the labatt projects, it would be four months after the P U C transfer is complete.
So is it going to be defined like, by, with the definition of that, then be defined by P U C and then 60 days thereafter?
Yeah.
So do you know, I can't, can I get that into the, for that?
Hold on, sorry. Okay, so since this involves installing a pipeline, who am I meant that? So it would still be the two months for the annexation, it'd be four months for designing the labatt, but one year after the P U C transfer is complete.
Can you speak up just a little bit, please?
How critical would it be to find out that, that, or?
I'm going to have to use more.
For the, for a year for the flooding, they have to offer some credit to that water release and so on there. So, um, once they annex and then they zone, they have to, they have to go through a blinder pot and then a construction hand review for that, that water line. That water line is going to be almost like half a mile from the subdivision that they're sending it from. And so once the construction hand are approved, they have to install that water line, and we want to give them adequate time to be able to get that installed appropriately and inspect the vice of the staff for the, we don't use an accepted. So I don't want to make that timeframe too short, that it's too, too compact for that because that, that infrastructure goes hand in hand with the plating. So a year for the, for the panel, panel plating is adequate for that, for that water line being descended.
The motion, if there is one, would need to include those dates, correct?
Yeah, I would say approve it, um, I would say approve it with the amendments discussed, or do you think, do you like each of the dates?
For the, the way it works.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments.
Can we even have a vote?
No, I believe so.
So before you pass the, for the date to certify compliance, did you want that to just be the middle of the year, July 31st each year? They just have to submit ready to the city that they're compliant with the agreement terms each year.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
And the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The others? We're in open a public hearing to discuss and take possible action on ordinance Number 2025-0701 to allow for a conditional use permit to allow permanent cosmetics on property described as S-3857 Gerald Town, Gerald Town Block 40, Lot 19 to 24, zero number C L W 006479, Texas title number 0068, 9091, label number H W C 0227 525, acres approximately 24 acres, located at 403 Fifth Street here in Gerald, Texas. Ms. Bell.
Thank you, sir. Councilmembers, this request before you tonight is for a conditional use permit to allow intramural or permanent cosmetics to be allowed at 403 North Fifth Street. There is currently a salon there that has been in operation. They've just received their certificate of occupancy within the last few weeks. They were permitted to do their finish up last summer by previous staff. City of Gerald ordinances do state that any type of tattooing on Personal Services Limited Personal Services must be allowed by conditional use permit. They are heavily regulated by the State of Texas Health and Human Services. So because they are asking to do permanent makeup, eyebrow, eyeliner, lip, it is considered a form of tattooing, and so they do have to request conditional use permit to the findings on the commission and to the study. Findings on the commission did hear this request at the end of June and did make recommendation of, of approval for 421. One does something, both agree on this one. So there is a definition in there for intramural cosmetics as defined by the Texas Department of State Health Services. This type of business is gaining popularity. Many, many of its colleagues have adopted ordinances to allow physically allowed use, but as I stated, this one is allowed only by conditional use permit for the, for the ordinances. Existing land uses in the vicinity are vacant to the north, the south is a residential use, to the east is a public facility, the Gerald Middle School, and to the west is another There was some concern presented at the findings on the commission about it being in close proximity to the middle school. However, like we already said, tattoo services are heavily regulated by the state. Cannot get a tattoo if you're over the age of 18 unless you're with a parent parental permission. So that, you know, that's kind of like having an alcohol service within that, that same vicinity. It's heavily regulated by another entity, by another body. The applicant is here for any questions, and of course, I'm going to refer to any questions as well.
And the conditions are just eyebrow, eyeliner, lips, and not body art or any correct?
Yeah, I, we did this statement in there in the form of tattoos, that those, those three areas.
You said it was 401, not, I mean, 104 to go for?
That's right.
You got a concern that the one who sent it?
He did not want it.
But you did, you said they already had a permit for a salon?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
If you have questions for me, or any questions for the applicant, I appreciate you jumping on board with that.
Trips me up every time.
So we can close this public hearing? With the item that say, "Possible action." So we can't take action on it?
Yes.
And for a type two?
No, I'd like to make a motion to approve in G O 2025-307 with the conditions as presented in Exhibit A, as read in the caption by the mayor, Ms. Bell, based on statute recommendation and findings.
Second. Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The others? All those opposed say nay. We're in open a public hearing to discuss and take possible action on ordinance Number 2025-0702, for variance from the City of Gerald Code of Ordnances 6.12.06. Table 6.3, number dimensions and location of individual sign by zoning district, which allows a free standing sign of a maximum size of 200 square feet, property described as A W 0421, Manchaca A, serial number 125197928, level number T E X 0477033, 3.09 acres, is located at 8360 IH 35 Gerald, Texas. Ms. Bell.
Thank you, sir. The request before you this evening is for a variance for the sign size allowed for aqua pools located at 8360 North IH 35. Just a point of clarification on the address. It is actually Georgetown, but it's within our city limits, and then we go to Georgetown actual city limits, it's in Gerald. And the applicant did submit a sign permit for aqua pools for a 308 square foot size sign, sign limit, or sign, sorry, sign regulation for monocle signs in Gerald are 200 square feet. So the applicant did request this variance. Staff did not make a recommendation on this inherently if they're requesting variance because they're trying to not meet the code of ordinances of the city council and the city staff that have adopted. So you're not going, you're usually not going to see a recommendation by city staff. However, with this request, I would, I would recommend that you keep in mind the location of this business, where it is located within the city limits, the approximate, the businesses in the surrounding area, and what they do have existing per signage, what, you know, to meet the general area. If somebody's intending to go to this business, they're not going to be trying to get off of the highway, you know, searching for like the fast food restaurant, something like that. They have distinct, they are going there with intention. So this would be easier for them to see from the access road, this business is located off of the access road, and would be appropriate size for that type of business. Again, the applicant is here, and I know that there are questions as well.
So you're saying the sign they're requesting is appropriate for?
Or the sign, the, the sign size that they're requesting does match the style on the sign, signs in the area?
Does?
Does, does, yeah. Does not meet the city code, but it does match what is existing on there already, for the surrounding businesses.
Do you know when, when that regulation was put in, 200 feet for that area?
I don't for sure. I know that code changes today, P U C were made last March, and I don't know if it's one of them, or if it was then or never.
Good looking sign.
There was a question about the window for the sign at the findings on the commission, and you said it was designed for 140?
So the engineer is 150?
150 miles per hour. Since we have had such a windy spring, there was concern about whether the sign could withstand the winds, and it was designed for 150 miles per hour.
Is the sign blocking anybody else's? Like, did I hear a?
No, sir. So the property to the north is a, is a church, and they have a, a sign, a, a green sign. The property to the south is vacant. The east, property to the east is also part of that church, and property to the west is the, on the second floor, so it's not, it would not be blocking any of the signs.
Close this public hearing?
I'll make a motion to approve in G O number 2025-308, based on the discussed recommendation and findings.
Second. Can you just repeat that?
Me?
Yeah.
Do I, I'll do it, should I read all this? Okay.
No.
Oh, okay. Oh, one more. I'll make a motion to approve M G O 2025-308, as read in the caption by the mayor, based on discussed recommendations and findings.
We could state the ordinance.
Oh, so sorry. Let me see where that is. One moment.
That's my, I did not put that in.
Is it right here?
On, on the agenda, three points.
Oh. Ordinance 2025-702.
I'll have that look to the, to the next panel.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, unanimous. Agenda item number five, regular agenda items. 5.1, Consideration of Possible Action Regarding Financial Report for the period ending April 30th, 2025. Ms. Peace.
Mayor, we're getting young, we're getting a lot of time left, so there's a lot of income, a lot of expenditure, or something more low, then I'll maybe do some transfers, physical transfers, then the next month, or, I don't know, I mean.
Okay. Are we looking on time to get the budget done so we can play a time to look over that group? Or, no?
I'll catch you that.
We, it's part of the agenda tonight. We're going to, I'm going to give you, we're running it up.
Forget that I have to. I'm at that.
You're good.
You are on time. Is it saying to your, your? Yes.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, unanimous. Agenda item 5.2, Consideration of Possible Action Regarding the Orderment Number 2025-07-03, Approving the Request for Removal from the Extramunicipal Jurisdiction Boundaries of the City of Gerald on Property referred to as A W 0172, for the Davis East Survey, acres 109.22, property ID R 011339, and B A W 0172, the Davis East Survey, acres 1.29, property ID R.
Okay. Are we looking on time to get the budget done so we can play a kind of look over that group? Or? I'll get you that.
We, it's part of the agenda tonight. We're going to, I'm going to give you.
Forget that. Forget that. I have to. You were on time.
Is it saying to your?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Unanimous. Agenda item five point two, consideration of possible action regarding ordinance number two zero two five dash zero seven dash zero three, approving the request for removal from the extraterritorial jurisdiction boundaries of the city of general on properties referred to as A W zero one seven two. For the Davis East survey acres one hundred nine point two two, property ID R zero one one three three nine, B A W zero one seven two. The Davis East survey acres one point two nine, property ID R four six one eight seven four. C and D. A W zero one seven two, same survey, one hundred and six acres. Property ID R four nine three eight three two. D A W zero seven, zero one seven two, same survey, property ID R zero one one four zero zero. Let's go.
Thank you, sir. This request and our request immediately are backwards. Our goal for properties to be removed from the E T J. As we've discussed before in previous meetings, you have, this body has thirty days to respond to this or it's, or the removal refers by operation of law or chapter forty three of the local government code. These requests were received two to three years ago, depending on which one we're looking at. So we're just formalizing this by presenting it in the ordinance so that we can say it was, you know, officially recognized and allowed in the county. So this request is for four parcels to be removed from the E T J. The property is written from there stated. I'm available for any questions. You can come in.
Let's just be clear. If this is what I asked you. I'll make a motion. Uh, you need an order to.
You can say make a motion to approve of ordinance number.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty point five zero seven zero three.
Motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Unanimous. Agenda item five point three, consideration of possible action regarding ordinance number two zero two five dash zero seven dash zero four. Approving the request for removal from the extraterritorial jurisdiction boundaries of the city of general on property referred to as fifty one point nine acre tract of land being of the East State with survey abstract number one seventy two. Two rated in Winston County, Texas, being part of the tract of land described as two hundred and thirty point nine seven acres conveyed through J T X Land Holdings and indeed record document number two zero two one one three two one two four, official public records of Winston County, Texas.
Yes, sir. So this is a better proceeding. Oh, for, how do you know? This request was received a couple of years ago by the city. It's already occurred by operation of law. So this is for about fifty one point nine zero acres of the two hundred and thirty acre tract. The fifty one point nine zero acres is the only portion of that tract located within the E T J. And there's an exhibit in there to show you approximately the location of the property.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number two zero two five dash zero seven dash zero four.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Unanimous. Thank you. Five, agenda item five point four, consideration of possible action to approve an interlocal agreement between the city of general, Santera Municipal Utility District for the provision of pass-through wastewater services and fire flow water capacity to cornhill business partners. Mr. Anderson.
This agreement is for providing fire flow and wastewater to the cornhill business part, uh, to the side that is identified. This will allow only use of water on fire flow past as a data infrastructure to serve the cornhill business part. City may terminate if the flow exit capacity agreed and the city retains verification authority. The developer will fund all the infrastructure and will pay all the impact fees. City retains eighty percent of any fire flow related connection. No capital contribution for the city and the fire flow capacity will be metered, not subject to the money billing, just any fire flow they use at the time.
We're not paying for it.
We're not paying for it. And the same goes for any other businesses that go in the area. They would have, they would have to install whatever portion of the fire flow at their bank. City is not.
You're ready to finish?
Now, in the only net, it would be if you don't have any control, it's pending there in the contract. If they have sit amount, we can call them.
Do you think a motion? Okay. Make a motion to approve. Five point four. Motion to approve an interlocal agreement between the city and Santera.
Make a motion to approve an interlocal agreement between the city and Santera.
Motion on the floor. Anybody? Motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Unanimous. Ten nine and five point five, consideration of possible action regarding to receive a presentation of the Texas Gas Services I L A provide direction to the city attorney regarding negotiation of a franchise agreement with One Gas Inc. Should the city wish to permit Texas Gas Service as an additional natural gas provider alongside Atmos Energy, approval of ordinance number two zero two five dash zero seven zero one dash zero seven. Mr. Anderson.
Again, this item is, uh, Texas Gas is seeking an interlocal agreement with the city. This item, this agenda item is not for approval tonight, just to give the city attorney direction to negotiate the terms of the interlocal agreement. Right now, we only have Atmos currently operating with an existing franchise agreement. It would be a second one if the attorney negotiation goes well and we present it before you begin.
Wouldn't be valid in any agreement with Atmos if we were not.
Right now, and right now, we are not approving the interlocal agreement with Texas Gas. We're giving direction to the city attorney to negotiate.
Right. But with our agreement with Atmos, we are allowed to look and discuss with other companies.
Yes, Atmos has a long inclusive franchise and they can have other gases.
That's no, no complete clause in the agreement.
That's what I would be after. Okay, I make the motion to. Give a direction to the city attorney to be able to negotiate with Texas Gas Services.
Second. All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So upon the negotiating, will we see the final agreement?
Yes, yes. They will be presented.
Thank you.
So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Ten nine and five point six, consideration of possible action regarding approval of the first amendment to the consent and development agreement between the city of general, L G I Homes, Texas, and Winston County Municipal Utility District number forty nine. Mr. Anderson.
This item is an amendment to the regional agreement that will lot two thousand three hundred fifty three L U D, L U Es of the least station capacity representing sixty six point six percent of the total. This will enhance the capacity of the city to serve future development and save city money in retrofitting the area. City was committed on the regional agreement to pay for sixty six point six percent, but no monetary amount was defined. Now we have a monetary amount this, uh, built into the agreement. They are subject to final reconciliation based on actual construction increases. M R B will be reviewing the construction records and specifications and requesting a final higher construction cost figures. If the city receives any inflated or any supported cost of the legal standing on the agreement, we can withhold payment. The first agreement was not as defined as this one.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Agenda item five point seven, discussion of possible action on the approval of the twenty twenty five, twenty thirty operation service contract with Crossroad Utility Services LLC. Mr. Anderson.
This item is a renewal of contract with Crossroad. It will be for a five-year term. It's going to do state clear free scale, uh, do state the routine report, which currently we have quarterly meetings with them and some of them requested by an agatha on the behalf. They do request the meetings in person and to let us know where the status of our facilities are. So we haven't had any issue with them. Yes, there's some corrective action. City can intervene sooner if Crossroad fails to meet standards. There's in indemnification protection for the city. Crossroad must defend, indemnify and should hold the city harmless for any claims arising from negligence, mismanagement, regulatory non-compliance or damage caused by Crossroad. There's a transitional phase built into it that will allow us to hire people. They will train them and we can take over the facilities at a, at one point. It's within the contract. They will train the personnel. They will transfer the utility data, provide tech support to the city, no additional cost to the city, as this is, this is within this code. Even with Crossroad, one thing that I want to highlight is that even with monetary Crossroad, it's higher than the previous consortium we have. The city, for the same amount of time, has saved thirty one point twenty three percent compared to the same, to the prior experience there. The recent fees are high. They include more in the fee, so we are not subject to surprises or, um, extra bills. Good. Yeah, people. I'm happy and I have my superintendent here. He can speak about, about when he took over facilities and when Crossroad came on board.
The facilities that we have now, you wouldn't, you wouldn't notice if you seen them several months back. The plants were disgusting. Maintenance was not up to date with anything. Parts were missing. The attention to detail that Crossroads actually puts into every single thing is actually above and beyond what I expected when neighbors came in. There has been nothing on my side that I've seen that I can even complain about.
And we haven't had any single mishap with T C Q since they took over. Again, for the, for the same amount of time, for the whole year, we have saved thirty one point three percent.
What was our, what was the length of our previous contract?
It was about a year.
Do you want to make a statement?
Five years. But it's five years, but we can transition if we choose to, with that five-year plan to take over the facilities.
Do you have any kind of problem?
We have. We can intervene in the contract. We can intervene early.
So is this the bottom of the negotiation or is it the final association of the same contract, five-year contract?
I mean, it's pretty much the same as the first ones, but small detail and it gives us a fiscal to, it's more, it's more difficult in, in. We don't, we don't, we know, we know what we're going to be charged and how much we're going to be charged versus the prior contract. We never knew what the charge was for.
I'm concerned it was launched for one year to five years. That's just a big mistake. I thought I was up there with the next one too, where they say to bid on the.
We talked on the job in that, that's a separate, separate one. And there's a caveat of having that discussion.
I'll make a motion to renew the contract with Crossroads, so.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Go for the discussions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Unanimous. Ten nine and five point eight, discussion, consideration of possible action regarding the approval of the sale of the city's twenty twenty three Mack truck, Crossroad Utility Services LLC.
This item, I'm sure you guys have already covered. It's a twenty twenty, uh, Mack truck, vacuum truck that we purchased prior to the election of twenty twenty two for two hundred and fifty two thousand and two hundred, yeah, two hundred and fifty two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The truck sat in the dealership for a year and a half of use and the first thing that we had to invest was eight hundred dollars in batteries and to place a fuel pump and the diesel tank. The fuel, the diesel was hot, winterized and it ruined the truck. We ended up towing the truck to the facility and after further investigation, we found out that it has a nice custom cabin, but no functionality for the city. Unless we invest an additional forty thousand dollar cost in retrofitting the truck. Texas controller does mandate any municipality to depreciate any asset over a ten-year period. And I did a breakdown based on that, the general asset accounting principle gap. And if we do retrofit the truck, we pretty much going to end up in the hole by a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. The staff does recommend accept Crossroad offers, which at the moment that I brought, drafted, uh, or, uh, agenda item, it was eighty five thousand. So I was going to ask for your approval to renegotiate to a higher price, which Crossroad already took the initiative for reading the agenda and they came back with a more favorable offer to the city. One good thing about selling this truck, right now, we pay about eight hundred and sixty dollars for, for every, every visit. If we get it, if we sell the truck to them, that, that costs a way because we don't have to hire a driver. We don't have to worry about the maintenance cost in downtime and we can wait about equipment when we do move forward and start taking over the facilities.
I'll make a motion to approve the sale of the city's twenty twenty third Mack, Mack truck, Crossroad Utility Services.
Second.
Second. Before we invite, the new offer they gave me is more favorable is one oh five, is a hundred and five thousand, obviously within the range that I estimate it would be a better price for us.
Does that mean we are motion for the new amount?
I would, it would be better.
Okay.
Or either to give him, give Jorge or Texas surrender authority to negotiate.
To execute the contract for that amount?
I make a motion to allow Jorge to execute the sale of this reference amount.
For a hundred and five thousand. All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Unanimous. Agenda item five forty nine, consideration of possible action and direction regarding city's policy on permit related fees for the Gerald Independent School District, including whether to continue waiving permit fees. whether to continue waiving permit fees, plan review fees, and/or expectation fees.
Council, mayor.
I did get a request from the superintendent, because this school was, okay, all right, sorry to cut you off.
I got the superintendent could not make it to this meeting, she requests to table this item at the office meeting.
I'll motion to table item five point nine to the office committee.
Sir. We have a motion on the floor, in a second, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Agenda item five point one zero, consideration of possible action to approve the renaming of the Gerald Economic Development Corporation, JDC Director Position, to growth and infrastructure coordinator, jointly funded and managed between the city and the Gerald Economic Development Corporation. Mr. Anderson.
The current EDC director position was previously focused on traditional marketing and business recruitment, and now the EDC has shifted their goals to develop infrastructure. And I think if we rename that position to the, I'll do it again, sorry, to the growth and infrastructure coordinator, we can justify the share, the share link between the city and the EDC. It will help both in our water, wastewater, and infrastructure needs for the city, and it will have a more full agenda and more replayed work, we justify, and the cost will be shared between the EDC and the city.
And have the costs been outlined yet?
No, yeah, it will be with the same salary of the EDC director.
This is what we discussed in our workshop.
That's what we discussed in the workshop.
So that changes the salary, the city employee?
It will be a city employee, but now their salary and expenses will be shared between the EDC, and the job they will be doing will benefit both at the same time.
I'll motion to rename the Gerald Economic Development Corporation Director Position to Growth and Infrastructure Coordinator. Second.
We have a motion on the floor, in a second. No further discussion, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say nay, unanimous. Agenda item five one one one, consideration of possible action regarding ordinance number two zero two five dash zero seven zero one dash zero six, establishing a utility delinquent account collection policy for the city of Gerald. Mr. Anderson.
We talked this item a while back, and we agreed to send these accounts to collection, but we don't have enough ordinance and stated cutoff or repayment out of these accounts. Since during COVID-19, the city suspended the late fee penalties and utility disconnection, and never went back to that habit after COVID. We have accounts that are delinquent within the hundreds, and we have one account that exceeds the twenty thousand dollars to owe to the city. The purpose of this ordinance is to establish, define the delinquent's account as unpaid ten days after the second million notice, requires a down payment of five hundred and thirty-five percent of the total delinquent, which are disgraced, requires full current bill plus monthly installment paid over a maximum of twelve months, impose ten percent late fee if payment is missed on the plan, address disconnection after thirty days of non-payment with a seven-dollar reconnection fee, ask twenty-five-dollar administrative sales fee for all payment plans, and premium referrers to accounts over one thousand to court or collections, within the twelve-months prepayment plan, as invented in the ordinance. For those accounts in the twenty thousand, we're going to be realistic, then nobody's going to pay them in twelve months, then we have to sit down with the city manager and negotiate a payment plan, a repayment plan for that amount.
Is this in line with whatever cities do around us?
The only fault that we have, what we have is in black and white, so it was going to be hard for us to force, now as adopting this ordinance, we have something that we can back up.
So this is in regard to going forward, if there are, so like you said, I'm saying, well, we got to have an ordinance, so we can't collect it, if I don't go forward, is it going to be very clearly defined, are we still going to be able to collect?
Yes, we're going to have sent, we're sending notice to let this, this will reinforce the previous ordinance of their collection agency, now we stay in a non-tollary collective agency, the city has the right to disconnect.
Right now, they still collect it?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number two zero two five dash zero seven zero six, that's for second.
Second. We have a motion on the floor, in a second, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say nay, unanimous. Agenda item six is going to be a workshop and informational items, six point one, and presentation on potential redevelopment on property located in Old Town.
All right, I just wanted to introduce myself, my name is Gabriel Creve. I want to start off by saying I've never really done any public speaking or any presentation like this, so have some grace and just understand that I am nervous, and this is the first time I've done anything like this. But what I am confident in is creating and launching and operating successful restaurant concepts. Let me give you just a little background history on myself, I'm originally from Olota, Texas, it's a small town just on the outskirts of San Antonio. At one time, it reminded me a lot of Gerald, but it's grown a lot since then. My wife and I moved to Georgetown sixteen years ago, my first job was working with GISD as a special education teacher for four years. During that time, I also served as the commissioner of the upward basketball league, I worked out the stretch of Georgetown, so we had over five hundred participants and fifty volunteers, it was a great way to earn extra income, but more importantly, I love to be part of the faith-based basketball league that gave back to the community. But working two jobs is tough, especially with a young family, I realized I needed to move and be more present in my daughter's life, I love coaching soccer and basketball, being involved in her day-to-day, that became my top priority. So with that, I pivoted back to the restaurant world. I wasn't exactly sure what that would look like, but an opportunity came up totally unexpected on a trout fishing trip at the San Juan River in New Mexico. I was with some local Georgetown leaders, and during a hike in the mountains of New Mexico, I struck up a conversation with Cody Hurt, the owner of Mesquite Creek Outfitters, Golden Rule, Gold Burger, Camp Brightside, and River Ranch Provisions in Georgetown. At that time, Cody was entering the early stages of planning, and Golden Rule quickly hit it off, and he realized that I was the right person to help bring his vision to life, he brought me on board, and the rest, they say, is history. After opening Golden Rule, the doors started flying open for me with opportunities, and that path has led me to where I am here today. So I'm just presenting my idea and my concepts for reopening the Grainery. So mission statement is, our mission is to deliver exceptional dining with social experience that fuses rustic Texas flavors with modern culinary innovation. The Grainery will serve as a community-driven destination, a welcoming space where families gather, friends connect, and lasting memories are made. Through our dedication to warm southern hospitality, craft beverages, and high-quality cuisine, we aim to become a cornerstone in the growing central Texas region from Waco to Austin, Colleen to Gerald, the Grainery will be a gathering place that exemplifies the heart and soul of Texas. This is a little bit of my history, what I do and what I've done over the last thirty years, I have thirty years in this industry. I bring wealth and knowledge in restaurant operations, marketing, and concept development. As a consultant, I successfully launched and revitalized restaurants across central Texas, including notable establishments such as Golden Rule, Mikey B's Tacos, and District Six, and those are all located on the square in downtown Georgetown. I have strategic expertise and strong understanding of brand development and customer engagement, which I think will be critical to the Grainery's growth and long-term success. Marketing opportunities, this is just some of the marketing opportunities I put together, I'm sure y'all are well aware of a lot of this. Located along the rapid development I-35 corridor between Austin-Waco, Gerald's experienced a significant population and commercial growth, this makes an ideal location for the concept that integrates dining, entertainment, and community engagement. With this rise in demand, the region's growth has outpaced the availability of elevated dining and social venues, the Grainery will fill this gap with a dynamic concept that appeals to families, young professions, and tourists alike. Unlike traditional restaurants or bars, the Grainery combines Top Fifty BBQ, Rossler's Blue Court is on board to provide the barbecue for this establishment, he was just recently listed in the Top Fifty on the Texas Monopoly as one of the best barbecue places in Texas. So that definitely puts us on the map as far as having that guy on my side. We're going to use creative appetizers, sides, burgers, dishes, a recreational component, I'd like to put an nine-hole pub but golf course on there as well to bring families in, more than just a place for adults to hang out. Regular community events and entertainment, a strong family-friendly, community-centered identity. So the concept is right here, step one, award-winning Texas barbecue featuring prime brisket, raspberry pork belly, burnt ends, pork ribs, turkey, sausage, smash burgers, chicken sandwiches, and signature Texas sides and desserts, sorry about going in the wrong place, it's like daytime right now, people, it sounds good, it's been over good timing. Community-focused events, hosting live music, farmer's market, holiday events, and more to promote year-round community interaction. Family-friendly design, safe, welcoming environment for guests of all ages, including menu options and entertainment features, event-based rentals, indoor and outdoor venues for private parties, business meetings, and celebrations. Visionary expansion plans, future amenities includes nine-hole pub, that's phase one, onsite brewery and taproom, that's phase three, and phase four is upscale whiskey and cigar lounge on property. Similar to something that I did at Golden Rule, so it's something I've done in the past, and I know I could create again out here. These are just some AI-generated pictures that I brought up, you know, I'd love to see a two-step dance floor in front of the stage out there, just to make this more of a destination spot, I'd love to add AstroTurf to the spot, so there isn't just dirt and debris blowing all over and making it more of a place where you wouldn't mind sitting down outside to eat, I'd also like to add Mr.'s fans, wind sail covered seating, along with just some refresh as far as the tables and just the sting or anything out there as well. I'd also like to get some paint on the building and just kind of rebrand it a little bit in freshen it up, I know that we've, it's been open a couple times, I'd love to just jump into this with a different vision, different idea, and show people that we're bringing something different, it's just not, we're not going in there just opening up and starting with what we have, I'd love to just get in there with a head start and really make this a place, a center place in Gerald where people go and hang out and want to be part of. This is just the concept, it's featuring all the things that we just went over previously, it's just a reiteration of that. So employment opportunities for the local residents, as a strong, as a community first base business, the Grainery will serve as an important job creator in Gerald and the surrounding areas, offering a wide range of employment opportunities for local residents, including initially hiring goals. So starting off, I'm looking at fifteen to twenty positions right out the gate, this lists all the positions that we'll need there, and all the help that I'll need there as well. Ongoing growth and opportunities, expanded staff at brewery, lounge, and entertainment programs launch, career growth pathways with training and hospitality, customer service, culinary arts, and bid planning, internship and mentorship opportunities for local high school students and college students, I have a sixteen-year-old daughter myself, she works with me, at any concept that I've ever opened and started, so I think it's really important to focus on that, and just show these kids at an early age just a good work ethic and a safe place for them to be. Management development programs to promote within. So this is just the employment opportunities for local residents, start hiring from within Gerald, and we're in communities, partnership with local schools, and job training centers, competitive wages and incentive programs for long-term retention, a focus on creating a positive, inclusive workplace where everybody's welcome and where anybody can come work. Growth and expansion strategy, phase one is target opening mid-September two thousand twenty-five, partnership with Rossler's Blue Court Barbecue to anchor our core offering. Initial launch includes restaurant, pub, but golf course, AstroTurf, two-step wooden dance floor, uncovered wind sail seating. Membership programs will be introduced to drive early loyalty and revenue. Phase two, this would be live entertainment, catering services, farmer's market, branded merchandise, sauces and barrels available for sale, weekly events designed to enhance customer experience and foot traffic. Phase three would be the brewery development, craft beer production and taproom experience to broaden the audience and increase margins, collaboration with local brewers to support the regional craft scene. So going into phase four, phase four, we're looking at a whiskey and cigar lounge to attract adult clientele, seeking premium, relaxed experience, high margins, additions to the Grainery ecosystem. And then phase five, long-term expansion, additional locations in high-growth areas across Texas, potential franchisees, and more licensing based on performance, expansion of catering, event services, and packaged goods. This is a little breakdown of the membership program, and I'd like to start there, so we have three different levels, you have the Trainmaster, and the reason why these are named Trainmaster, because they're switchband, there's a possible, there's a possible chance we might do a name change and bring in more into Gerald, I know that the railroad system is important to the history of Gerald, so we'd like to maybe think of a rebrand and also incorporate some of those things with it, too. I'm not going to list the membership program and go over it, you guys have that detailed right there, and any concept that I've opened up, having a membership program brings people in from the ground floor, makes them feel part of something, gives them a place to hang out, gives them a place to go, and then also lets them bring people in and let them know that they're also a member here, and that they can come and check this out, and these people will want to be members as well. This, I've seen it, I've seen it working with Mesquite Creek Outfitters, I've seen it working at Golden Rule, it's a concept that really ties people in from the ground bottom and keeps them involved and keeps them invested in it. Marketing and community launch, so brand awareness strategy, targeted digital advertising across central Texas, collaboration with local influencers and press, one of my good buddies, right now, he's just one of my friends that I've had probably for the last fifteen years, and it's Chuck Garner, the Day Tripper, he's always been there for me, he's one of my mentors, he's somebody who I hang out with, he's somebody who I've gone on San Juan fishing trips with, just a great guy who would be on board and be able to promote and also market this place as well. Local business outreach, B2B sponsorship and local networking, group partnership with schools, churches, and civic organizations. I'd also like to do on Sunday, before we open up service, I'd love to do a church service from our location, it'd be satellite brought in from City Church in downtown Georgetown, it's a church that I'm a member at, but I'd love to bring that out there, too, to where people could also go there for church service, and then maybe stay afterwards for brunch, or stay afterwards for lunch, and just bring community involvement in that aspect. Launch showcase events, free community, so this would be the launching of the showcase events and letting people know what's going on, so we have a free community celebration feature, tasting of four or five or menu items, have several food trucks, bounce house, petting zoo, farmer market-style booths, video previews of future expansion, membership raffles, this high visibility event will create immediate brand buzz demonstration for our commitment to community connection. In conclusion, the Grainery is more than a restaurant, it's a destination rooted in community culture and culinary excellence, with a high-growth location, a best-in-class team, scalable revenue streams, and commitments of local hiring, Grainery offers compelling opportunities to investors seeking long-term value and community impact, invite you to join us, and build something truly meaningful for central Texas. Thank you, I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions?
That's all.
Yep. Thank you. Okay, agenda six point two, city of Gerald, July Fourth Celebration. Okay, agenda six point two, City of Gerald July Fourth Celebration.
July Fourth coming up, we're gonna have a, a activity by the Cherry Posse. We're gonna, we're gonna start setting up a fort. We're gonna have kids game by fourth day. Fireworks are gonna be a night theme. We have some policies we request to the police, don't bring alcohol, don't bring your fireworks, and that means even, uh, even the spiders. We have a, we have a layout, it's gonna be the Cherry Posse. The main parking will be the Cherry Posse's parking, Posse parking. The second parking will be the Double Creek Elementary School. Next to the community center, we're gonna have the viewing area, the kids' activity, and the fire department obstacle course for the kids. There are gonna be prizes for the kids as they play, and these are returns come for serve. The community center is gonna still serve as a cooling station, missing child, or any, any emergency, emergency center. And the PD is gonna be along four eighty-seven to help slow down traffic to the crowd. It's an important activity, I think, it's a, it's a good event for the community, and with that, I want to leave with our message. As we approach Independence Day, we're reminded not to忘意of our nation's freedom or the power of unity. Today marks the beginning of a new tradition, bringing the community together with purpose. Let's be the first of many events where we are side past differences and walk forward as one. Together we can build a stronger, more connected Gerald. We must all hang together, or most assuredly we should all hang separately, in a franking. I hope to see you all and expect this to be a good turnout and one of many events to bring the community together again.
Thank you. All right, agenda six point three, presentation to discussion regarding the city of Gerald's fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six running draft.
I'm from New York, I'm giving you a drawing draft of the project. It's not, it's not being registered, it's not public, it's for you guys to see where we are standing at this point. As the May thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. It would give an idea of where we at and where we heading. Numbers are not final, we're still waiting for the tax office and the the accounting office to give us the final numbers. There will be one adjustment, and hopefully by July, I will bring you, I will bring you a more detailed report, and that will be an official registered proposed project. I just wanna keep you that we're working on the project, it's not, not forgetting about it, and we're moving forward with the, to be saying with the proposed one in the future. Go over and please, any question you have, feel free to direct me, I would like to address as many questions I can for the proposed one.
All right, agenda six point four, presentation to discussion, proposed schedule for adoption of revised water and wastewater impact fees. Fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and request for council's court to meet upcoming legislative deadline. Mr. Hernandez?
As we all know, wastewater and wastewater impact fees, we have been doing an adjustment to our impact fees for rates for the past nine years. Half a session conducted an impact fee study back in twenty twenty-four, the study was never presented before council for adoption. The study suggested that increasing the water and wastewater impact fees. Present staff have consulted with KPA and we are under the impression that the wastewater impact fee suggested by half is sufficient. But the water impact fee will need, most likely need to be adjusted to a higher rate. New impacting will be presented later based on the ongoing water and wastewater master plan that we, we KPA did. The reason we're holding back is that twenty twenty-five Texas state inflations, state bill eighteen eighty-three started, started September first, twenty twenty-five. We lock the city on a three-year moratorium, meaning that whatever rate we adopt, we cannot change for three years. The reason of the delay is we wanna make sure that the rate we adopt is the closest and the most accurate for the city. With that, we have an aggressive schedule that we're starting today that we need to obey by. July first, today, New Gen will be presenting after this the race. July second, we will, it will be the first public hearing. July eight, planning and zoning after ordinance, it will serve as the impact fee committee. There will be the rate advisory committee at that meeting. July sixteen, we will be the second hearing. August fifth, second council meeting for the second public hearing. On the twelfth, planning and zoning, again, the rate advisory committee will meet for the land use assumption and the impact presentation. And August nineteen, it will be a special council meeting for the second public hearing and the council action on adoption of the new wastewater and wastewater impact fees. With these new rates, I'm hoping that we're gonna be in a better standing and we will, we can still see, we're gonna start going in a better path than we are right now.
All right, agenda six point five, we're gonna have a presentation to discussion of the draft water and wastewater rate study prepared by New Gen. Strategies and solutions and revised direction regarding the adoption of revised until year end fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
This item is not to be confused with the water and wastewater impact fee, this is our place that we have to deal with, which is well, it's a new gen.
Thank you, good evening. As already mentioned, not to be confused with the rate study, as we, with the impact fees, as I go through this though, I'll point out a few things that they do interact with each other. We're depending on some things that are happening from the impact fee study to support the rate study, to offset some things in the rate study. I'll show you where those are and this came in as a draft item, part of the reason for that draft is because of what's happening with the impact fee study right now. That'll impact what we do with this. Part of that would be the capital program. When we do this, we start out with this slide for a reason, because when we approach these things, approach these studies, this is the mindset that we have, basically, y'all run a business, y'all run a big business, and utility portion, the enterprise portion of that are businesses in that bigger business. Some of the main concepts when we're doing the business, when we approach this is we expect some district revenues are gonna match your expenses, just part of having a financially sound business on that. Reserves, paying for, this is literally paying for a rate day, but just reserves for being able to continue operations. Reinvestment, we expect the business to be able to invest in itself, invest in its infrastructure, invest in its future. Same things that we're looking at when we look at the process for, for utility, for rates, for rate revenues, and just continuing in the future. So with that in mind, no surprise to utilities are extremely fixed cost-intensive operations. So most of your operation, most of the expenses that you, you spend every day are fixed expenses on that. Then you have the other part, that's a much smaller part, your variable component, chemicals, electricity, things that only change if you actually do something, if you sell water and treat. So then when we go set the rates, we really have two ways that we look at this. One of those ways is a utility basis of rate setting, does not apply to y'all. It applies to your customers that you sell bulk water to or you treat, your wholesale customers. We look at those from a utility basis, we look at different things on that, we look at rate returns, depreciation, those types of things. Not things that you look at when you're setting your rates, you do it on what we call a cash basis, which is no different from where you run out, basically, get your money in, you have mortgage, you have food, electricity bills, order bills, all those things, your auto payments. Money coming in, money coming out, same thing with utility when we look at here. You got your revenues coming in, and you have your monthly schedules, and that's the way that we set the rates when we go through this process. In setting that, really three pieces to this, one of those revenue requirements, that we look at it, say for my pie, how big does that pie have to be, how much money do you actually need overall? Not whose it comes from, not who's creating it, just how much money do you need, how, how big is that pie? That's your revenue requirement. And then we determine where to get those mon, the money from, who's creating the expense for you, for the utility? That's where we're slicing up the pie, how big those pieces need to be cut, who do they go to, and then we recover it. So how do we recover those pieces in chunks here, each of those slices comes from a customer, customer class, and so then we're recovering. Those are the pieces, the revenue requirements, the classification for customers, and then the recovery part. When we talk about revenue requirements, how we mentioned in the beginning, when we're operating a business, we expect the revenues to match your revenue requirements. So your revenues match your expenses, your expenses are gonna be your day-to-day operations, your O M, operation maintenance expenses. They're gonna be things like your debt service, your outstanding debt, that principal and interest that you have annually are your, of your revenue requirement. Then your future capital items, your expansion, replacements, those type of things, your capital program. And then that rainy day we talked about is the maintaining and reserve balance. All of those go together to make up your revenue requirements, we expect to match your revenues. From the revenue part, that's when we get to talking about the rate side of it. As we mentioned before, two components mainly, a fixed component, which is the majority of what you do, is the majority of your expenses. And then the variable component, which is much smaller part. When you look at both of these, when we're recovering it, they do not necessarily match. So when we have a fixed component for the rate, we're not necessarily matching what your true fixed component of your system, of your operating system is, same thing on the variable side, really doesn't match what your variable part is. And the reason is, when we're doing this, we've gotta look, we, we all of us have to look at what we're trying to accomplish here. And this is the part on, we have the rates, we have the revenues, how do we wanna recover that? We have to take quite a few things into consideration, you have to take a few things into consideration, is what do you wanna accomplish? When you're recovering your revenues, getting, and we hope it's fairly straightforward, meeting your revenue needs, okay? Fairly simple, hope that's not a long one, but then how do we get those revenue needs? So we look at revenue stability, which we hope, no matter what happens, we're still able to recover revenues, affordability for our customers, our equity amongst our customers when we're doing this, administration, conservation, all of these things are things that you have to consider and work together, unfortunately. For instance, if you wanted conservation, if you're trying to encourage your customers to use less water, well, the downside to that is it may actually listen, well, it doesn't do much for revenue stability. So they offset economic development, if you want to make it easier for, for customers to come in, and you do want that. And that's, those are decisions that can make, well, it's a zero-sum game, so is that necessarily equitable or affordable? For the other customer classes, you still have to collect the same amount of money at the end of the day. That's why these things we prioritize when we go through this, what is most important, what's least important? And how can we fit all of those in, interest, you can't all of it, so you decide how you wanna recover those pieces of the pie. Big part of that is, and we have our customers on the other side, completely in priorities on this, so they're looking at whole completely list of, different list of things that, that they're dealing with on a day-to-day basis, there's no right or wrong. It's just how do they prioritize where they're spending their money, completely different from how you're gonna prioritize it. Most of the time, when we do this, it's really a communication issue, really a customer confusion thing, because the real cost to maintaining your infrastructure system isn't necessarily French pan, parent, and ratepayers. The way they see the system, the way you see the system, is not the same. I've been doing this for thirty-seven years now, and we did a great job when I was over in my career of convincing people that man, guess what, the more you use, the cheaper it's gonna be, beef, why, water's cheap, there's not a value to it. Great the end, or I did, well now we're figuring out, okay, I was kind of, kind of shot ourselves in the foot. Now let's back up and get this done all over again, so it's in communicating the value of service. And we don't look at it the same way ratepayers don't look at it, they're asking how your system is, how's your water system? Oh, my water tastes pretty good, and I turned to that one, oh, it sounds like a great system. We're sitting here going, okay, well, that street over there is aging, I've gotta replace it, I'm gonna have to replace these lines here, we're growing over here, so we have to put new lines in there. We're not looking at it through the same lenses, that's part of the communication part, same thing on conservation, conservation rates. What do you think of you, encourage me to use less, it's cheaper, well, eventually it'll be cheaper, but, but not initially. So it's a matter of communicating, getting the message across to your customers and, and figuring out what message that is actually. And as part of committing the, you know, the value of water. Is three ninety, what is three ninety, volume in Texas, what is it volume here? Three ninety is your second tier of water usage, just what you charge per thousand gallons. You don't charge for your first two thousand gallons of water, that's rolling to your fixed cost of basically you're providing the first two thousand gallons for free, you start charging in the second tier after two thousand gallons. At two thousand, at three ninety, that we're talking about, one and a quarter of a large cup of coffee from Starbucks. Or four and three-quarter cans of Coke, one and a third gallons of gas, twenty-three bottles of water, or thousand gallons of water, delivered right to your mouth. It's a communication issue, it's letting your ratepayers understand the value, and not just the value of water, of what it takes to get there. What it takes to get it, all they have to do is open a valve and it comes out, so it's communicating. Following that up now, where, where do you stand, what is happening with the system right now? Without increasing the customer rates, your revenues are insufficient for fiscal year twenty-six through twenty-thirty. Now, we are looking at, keep in mind where we started, expectations for running a business, we expect revenues to be sufficient to cover all your costs, so that's the way we're looking at it here. The key drivers on that are, one, we're assuming that you need to cover your existing debt service payments, the payments that are related to the water wastewater usability. Second part is the funding for the future, the funding, capital funding for the next five years. Currently, over the next five years, we're gonna have about sixteen and a half million dollars in existing debt service payments to cover. From the capital program over the next five years, about two hundred and five million dollars in capital improvements. This is one part where I said at the beginning, where the impact fee study will play off of this, because that's what they're looking at right now. When we looked at the two hundred and five million dollars, this was from that half study. So engineers now are taking a harder look at that, rearranging some of those, deciding what needs to stay, what can go, and, and what was, what was correct. The other part of that is, they're gonna come back, from an impact fee standpoint, they're gonna come back with a capital program for the next ten years, because chapter three ninety-five, the local, municipal government code says that you're looking at impact fees for the ten-year period, so they're gonna come back with a capital program for the next ten years. We're looking at it for the next five years, you're gonna see some of the impacts and what this five-year capital program needs. And again, we took the numbers out of what the half study has right now, because that's what we have to work with. That's part of what we're saying, preface it with, this is a draft report on the rates. In reality, what you probably would do is when we come back with the results of the capital program, we'll look, we'll find out what impact that is on the rates, and then we'll probably ask, okay, can we move some things? Can we push some things off a couple of years? From a cash flow standpoint is really what we're concerned about, honestly, still need to do the projects. Is it feasible to do it in the order that they're doing it? So that's one thing we'll have to consider when we go through this. The other part is, other than the, in addition to the, the debt service payments that you've gotten now, the capital program that need to address, we talked about the rainy day fund, you know, and for us, we look at it, say, from a ninety-day reserve, because if you didn't sell anything, you have the cash for ninety days to pay your bills, and, and that's where we're talking about, we're talking about the ninety-day reserve. For y'all, right now it's about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're above that now, but You're above that now, but that is a target that we shoot for. And then also, for future debt, for now, you have debt service payments requirements that you have to maintain as well. You don't want to default on that. These are a little tough to see, but these are your debt service payments, and really the part on the combined. When we look at this, we will show both, here's what's happening with the water, here's what happens with the wastewater. But ultimately, we look at it from a combined system, the things you do, you do together. A lot of your operation stuff, and you share employees, the staff, that type of thing. So we look at it from a combined. These are your existing debt service payments related to the utility. Currently, you don't pay those out of the utility. So this is, this is a little switch when we look at, when we're looking at this. We're assuming that the utility is funding itself. The utility is paying for what it's creating, part of that is the infrastructure and the debt associated. Another part, it's that $205 million capital plan coming up. You can see, and part of where I mentioned, this came out of the half-study for the impact, 2024 impact fee review. Uh, you've got some big ticket items, I'm saying 27 for water, that's $51 million. And 2030 for wastewater, $67 million. We go through these, and this is an engineering solution. Can some of those split, you split up over multiple years, or probably be spent in the constructions over multiple years? Can we shape the spending to that, um, the way we recover that money? Can we spread those out? All things to consider. Ultimately, these won't be the final numbers when they come back with the impact fee study, but this is a good starting point for us to work with. When we do this, some of these projects across the top, those are, you see under bond funding. Those are the, the capital items that you have there by year. We've offset some of that, and you go down to the second block at the bottom of the debt funding assumptions. You have some ARPA money available for some of these projects. That second line outside entity funding. You have some other, uh, interests that are contributing money to some of those projects. Some of it for engineering fees, some of it for actual construction of the project. And then you look at the other part, the impact fee revenues. We use the impact fees that you have in place now. When we do this, those will change a lot, actually. Uh, the biggest change is going to be on the wastewater side on that. So, uh, but those, those will be higher. So this is a conservative look, which I'm going to present to you until I have hard numbers anyway. I'm going to be conservative, but they're conservative based upon what you have in place now. We took those impact fee revenues, and what we're doing with them, and we'll explain it in a minute. Um, we're applying them to your debt service. You can take those impact fees, say you're going to be a million dollars in impact fee revenue. You can take it to an impact fee project and plop down a million dollars and say, okay, my project was five, now my project's four. Or we can apply them to the debt service payment associated with growth projects, which is something that Chapter 395 allows. Um, you get more bang for your buck. Your, your money goes further. It's the same as, how do you fund your car? How do you fund your house? Uh, it just allows you to do more, uh, with the money. So that's why we took that route. Under your current rates, again, I mentioned that we look at it from a water and a wastewater standpoint. We combine them together. This, this is what's happening with your system under current rates. We have the revenues up top, then under that's your O and M expenses, and then your debt. So we've included your existing debt service. We included the debt service payments on future projects from the capital program that's there. We also included, if you see, as you go down, about, about three-quarters of the way down, that capital transfers in reserves, the renewal replacement, that 1.5 million. This is what you're currently spending with a company that's operating your system right now. This is what they're roughly spending a year. Um, talking with your plant superintendent, that is catch-up. Basically, it's catch-up time right now. So we've got that 1.5 million all the way across. We'll probably in 2027 drop that 1.507, 08. Uh, we'll drop that probably down to a million in '27, and maybe down to $750,000 in, uh, 2029. Right here, without being able to, to really check on that, we just use what you're spending right now as a placeholder. But hopefully that starts going down as you start to catch up with things in the system. So that's why the bigger spend upfront, honestly. Um, what you do see is at the bottom there, that change in net assets. Starting in year one, 2025, you're about $2.7 million in the red, not having sufficient funds to do the things that you want to do. Now, you start at the very top, you've got about $4.6 million in fund balance and your utility fund balance. So then the way to cover that is that $2.7 million that you're short is coming straight out of your fund balance. So at the very bottom, brings your fund that balance down to a little under $2 million. The second year by 2026, you're about $2.9 million in the red, which now you've got a negative fund balance. And you carry that on out under current rates, covering your existing debt, covering your future needs for capital program. You're about, a little over $26 million in the hole. And this just gives a different view of it. Same thing we just talked about, the only thing we've done, you see in that second block, the water and then the wastewater. That breaks it out of what's happening between utility. You see water every year. We start off the change in net assets, that negative 2.3 million, then negative 2.8, then 2.6. That's how much water is behind, insufficient in revenue every year. And the same thing on the wastewater side, much closer. Big difference in that is your wholesale revenue, that's coming from some terror, that, that the wastewater is getting, that water is not giving. So same, same view. So what we've done, is we've run two scenarios on this, just to give you an idea of what it's going to take to get where you want to get, to get where you need to be. Scenario one is covering your operation and maintenance expenses. And that includes the capital side for renewal and replacement on just what the current, the company across those is doing right now and money that they're putting into the system to replace, update, bring it up to speed. So that's covering the O and M and your existing debt service payments. No capital, no, no capital component to that. Scenario two, same thing, O and M, existing debt service payments, but we included the capital program and the ongoing debt service payments from that. So we made some assumptions when we ran through this. As I mentioned before, impact fee revenues are going to be applied to your annual debt service payments. That way, we get a bigger bang for the buck. And plus, it allows you to go ahead and get your projects going. You don't have to wait till you collected the whole $5 million to start your project. So that, that's the benefit of that. Um, from the wastewater side, your wastewater customers currently give a fixed charge for everyone in your wastewater customer, just hardly $35, period. Doesn't matter the size, doesn't matter who it is, doesn't matter if it's a commercial, the residential, what it might be. What we did in this, when we ran these two scenarios, is, one, we put, uh, put them on a fixed fee plus a volumetric charge. And the volumetric charge comes out to roughly 75% of what the water usage is. So if any of them, when you're charging wastewater customer, it's got to be related to, to your water usage. Um, because you don't, we don't meter, small meters, you can't, for obvious reasons on the wastewater side. Um, your large meters will. So we base it on your, um, on your water usage. And that 75% is roughly what's called a winter water average. So that's roughly what your water customers use in the three winter months. And the idea behind that is, they're probably not putting it on the ground, they're not watering or anything with that. So that's pretty close to what your true inside usage is. And it came out to, probably at 75%. So fixed charge, fixed meter charge on the wastewater side, plus charging the volumetric. What that does do is, when, when we talk about setting the rates there and being equitable, one, it doesn't charge your one-bedroom, one-bath house, the same as it charges your four-bedroom, three-bath house, who's obviously contributing more to your system than the smaller one is. So that's where the equitability comes in. The other part I mentioned earlier, that your first 2,000 gallons right now, you include in your meter charge. So you're not charging for your first 2,000 gallons. In these scenarios, we have started charging for the first 2,000 gallons. We price it lower than what your true cost per water is. So it's cheaper than that second tier, it's cheaper than what your actual cost per water is, but we do have a charge for that. Then you set your debt service coverage at 1.1. The growth assumptions that the half report made in the impact fees, we roughly follow those. And we want that to be close. We don't want you to have some growth assumption over here, another one's over here, another one's over here. So we try to tie those together where we felt like it made sense. So scenario one, didn't include the STIP, only existing debt service. We had impact fees of $6.7 million over the five-year period. And this is what we got, again, across the top, no capital programs, so no, no capital funding up there. That meant no ARPA funding, no outside funding, but we did have the impact fee revenues. And there on the bottom, you saw this earlier slide, that's your existing debt service payments. Those are included. This is what it means. So you still see that change in net assets in 2025, there's still about $2.7 million insufficient funding for that. Does come out of fund balance, bring your fund balance down to a little under $2 million. In 2026, it's going to take a 35% increase in meter, a 50% in the volumetric, 35% in the meter charge on wastewater. And then we've got the volumetric charge for wastewater, $4.50 a thousand gallons. What that does is all the way down to the combined, which is how we look at it, that change in net assets, you're about insufficient funds, about $56,000, so just about even on that. Pulls a little bit from your, uh, from your fund balance. But from there on, no further increases are needed other than this first year. And then we start building up. You see on the change in net assets, we're recovering sufficient every year after that combined system. And then ending fund balance, we're adding to that every year. And what actually happens is we set that target fund balance that you want to be, whether it's 90 days, $750,000 or $1 million, $2 million, whatever that number is, that's a policy decision. Once you set that, we'll start bleeding off that cash for our capital projects then. So that'll just reduce the amount that you have to have to issue debt on. But you kind of can't help it, because you need that first year rate increase in order to have sufficient funds to cover that 2026. So then it'll just increase based upon growth, adding customers, um, and as your program, your, your capital program changes. So what that does, you see on the top portion, that's the water comparison. The bottom portion is wastewater in the green. We've got three, three comparisons here, and this is just your monthly residential bill. We've got it at 2,000 gallons, which currently you don't charge for the usage. We've got it at 6,000 gallons, which is about your average usage that y'all have in your system for residential customers. And then we have it at 10,000 gallons. So looking at that 6,000 gallons, 25, no change, in 2026, that monthly bill, year-over-year increase at 6,000 gallons, you see that $35.45. So the water bill, the average residential customer water bill is going to increase by $35.45 a month with that first rate change. And on the wastewater side, rate going down, their average, uh, average residential customer of 6,000 gallons, their monthly bill's going to increase by $39.25. And, and again, we showed earlier, that's the only rate increase that would be required from this scenario. Which really what that does then, overall, the monthly bill's going to increase for an average residential customer. Their combined bill's going to increase by about $74.70 a month. What that got us was covering our O and M, covering our existing debt service, covering our capital expenses for renewal and replacement on just the operation of the system. Now, under scenario two, same thing we just looked at. But now we've added the capital program, uh, that $205 million. What we've done, we've included the impact fees, same thing we just saw. And we'll bring back in that $14 million of ARPA, ARPA funding in the first year, $22.6 million of outside funding. The CIP, we funded 100% through revenue bond issues, and, and existing debt service was covered in this. On the top portion, you see the bond funding there for both water and wastewater. These are, the bond funding required at 100% on the capital program we just saw, less in that second box, that ARPA and the outside entity funding. So this matches, what's up there matches, uh, what your capital fund, your capital program was that we saw earlier, with that $205 million. And this is what it's going to take to get there. Same things deal in 2025. But in order to fund all of those, you're going to need a 50% increase on the meter charge, 100% increase on the volumetric. The meter charge on wastewater will go to 25% increase, and then $7,000 gallons on the volumetric for wastewater. That's in 2026. See what that does? It brings you just about to even if you go all the way down to the combined at the bottom there. Deficit of about $23,000. Fund balance of about 1.9 million. You see the second year, no increase there. Uh, deficit of about $61,000, still bleeding off of fund balance then. Then in 2028, uh, another increase, 100% on the meter charge for water, 75% on the volumetric for water, and then 40% for both for wastewater. Uh, for 2028, what that does is finally bring us, we're, uh, we're in the black of about $1.2 million when we add it to fund balance. No further increases, but you see, we've got a deficit of a little under $500,000 in, uh, 2029, and then 2030, about $1.9 million. And that's where we're really, uh, pulling off a fund balance again. Another assumption we made is the year that we issued debt, we didn't start the debt service payment until the next year. So when you see these hits, you're seeing the hit from that debt service payment kicking in, in the following year. So those big capital items you saw, uh, $51 million, $60 million, those have the associated debt service payments with it in the following year. And that's where you see the big jumps in, uh, in expenses. That's where I was talking about earlier. What you would actually do is come in and then prioritize your projects, align your projects to where they match what you can actually do with your funding and, with your funding plan. So, hey, capital program, some things need to be done, it all needs to be done. But, uh, that's where it's an engineering exercise, is to, how can we prioritize this where it's something that we can physically do and, and continue moving forward. So from a monthly bill standpoint, same thing that you saw in the other scenario. On the water side, at 6,000 gallons, uh, in 2026, your, your monthly bill for water would increase by $52.10 a month. And on the wastewater side, by $50.75 a month. In '28, you have another increase for both of them. Then combined, you're looking at for an average residential customer, your monthly increase would be $102.85. And then additional increase in 2028. And what this one does is cover all your O and M, covers all your existing debt service, and it covers your capital program. This is what it would take to get your systems to start funding themselves. And this is what it does from a regional bill comparison. These are surrounding cities, comparable cities. You can see right now, currently, you're in the middle, and you're not funding debt service, you're not funding future programs. under the scenarios, scenario one and scenario two, bringing to the top of the surrounding utilities. This is good information. This is not apples to apples. Uh, I'll tell you that. It's not a fair comparison for you to look at. It's nice to know. a fair comparison for you to look at, it's nice to know, this doesn't tell you at all what any of these surrounding cities are doing, if they're spending for their system, if they're spending for the system, if they have spent for their system, so you don't know what they're doing, you don't know what you're comparing against, it just gives you a snapshot of where they're at right now. Um, you don't know if they're considering the same things that you're doing, if they've already done it, uh, there's just not a way to tell, so that's why this is tough, it's good information, except it's not an apples to apples comparison for you. That being said, and we go back to, again, the same thing we look at, we expect revenues to match expenses, we can estimate on revenues, the only thing, hopefully, you can impact expenses some, but ultimately, at the end of the day, they need to equal and are going to have a viable system, um, that saving for rainy day, that, having that reserve funding, uh, those are important. Uh, I've worked with a lot of systems in my thirty seven years that don't do that part, and it doesn't take much, and I'm, I'm sure y'all are aware of this experience through it, that you can blow through money awfully fast, um, just a few, just a few incidents, and then reinvest in the system, uh, and I don't need to tell y'all, y'all look at it every day on the growth around here, and what's going on, and the expectations and the needs. So that's, that's what we've got, and again, these will change as things valid on the impact fee side, uh, these numbers are changed, uh, there are some things that will, that we already know, we know the capital program will change, we know that, uh, the revenue from impact fees will change, that will go up, so there are things that have changed this, and then just reprioritizing the capital program once we get there. Any, any questions, a lot of information, I realize that, and it's hard to digest and never fun, ever fun, this was not, the meeting I was most looking forward to, you said.
Will you go back two slides to where you have the city comparison, I just want to point something out. A lot of these cities, um, are under the Brazos River authority, they get their water through Brazos River, so through like local lakes, Stillhouse Lake, Ranger Lake, or, um, Belton Lake, Brazos River, three contracts are about to expire, these rates are all about to go up, so while this is an accurate comparison, right, for right now, these rates are about to go up as they renegotiate contract prices with all of these cities, uh, that they are under the VRD system.
What we're saying is that, right now, in this table, we look high, but when the new contract comes up, we're going to be the same old bracket every other city.
We're assuming that, right.
Assuming that they're going to go up?
Well, it's going to go up, don't.
They, um, I live in North Texas right now, and they have already issued that they were going up ten to seventeen percent every year for the next five years, um, and so.
But, but part of the issue is that we haven't gone up on our impact fees in.
Yeah, part of the issue is we have.
Like nine years, right, so that's, that's why we're kind of behind the ball.
It is, because, because what you don't do on that is those costs, I mean, you step through the capital costs.
Right, they're going to catch up to you at some point, they're catching up.
Yes, right.
Uh, did y'all, I assume y'all looked at like all the agreements outstanding that we have, um, even some of the ones where, we locked in impact fees for, say, two thousand houses at two thousand dollars?
Yes, sir, sure, sure, yeah. You, you've got some that, um, we'll, we'll, that will change this too, because some are tied to your inside city rates, so as your inside city rates go up, those, it kind of carries over some tariffs, the one that's tied to your inside city rates, we didn't have the ability right now, we're trying to get the data for that, um, this, this is different from the way that y'all deal now, so, uh, that wouldn't happen, that would be additional revenue, so that's a good point there, on that, but others, we, we did look at all wholesale, and a lot of those are wholesale contracts for what they are on that. That can tell you can renegotiate, and a lot of these things, um, like Centerra requires either inside city rates or an actual study of cost service, so, you know, these, these will help you, they give you tools to talk about this.
When do you, uh, expect to complete the study? Y'all been working on it for a while, right, the contract y'all, I know there's front things and issues, but just getting y'all information and stuff, but I've been asking about this for a while now, and, uh.
It just, uh, probably mid next month, but, uh, we're part of the driver behind impact fee, so as, as those get.
Got to work hand in hand right now.
Yes, so that's kind of what we're waiting on right now, at, uh, it's the capital program, hopefully they come back, but that's what we were wanting to see.
Hello?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, agenda item seven, we're going to adjourn into executive session, executive session pursuant to Texas government code section five five one point zero seven one, to seek the advice of its attorney regarding pending or complicated litigation or a settlement offer. For on a matter of which duty is the attorney to the government body under the Texas disciplinary rules, professional conduct of the state law and property rights, to Texas government code chapter five five one, to win a InfraMark LLC versus City of Gerald, document number two four dash three zero eight six, dash C four eight zero, the four hundred and eighty judicial district court of Williamson County, B, the E D on partnership number three versus City of Gerald, call number two zero dash zero one two five, dash C four two five, and the four hundred and twenty fifth district court of Williamson County, C, ranch, ranchwater agreement status and legal advice to counsel, D, executive session pursuant to Texas government code section five five one point zero seven four, to discuss, deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer employed to wit, city council vacant place four, E, executive session closed, meeting pursuant to Texas government code section five five one point zero seven four, to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer employed to wit, Gerald Economic Development Corporation vacant position. All right, we are now adjourned at eight fifty seven P M. Gerald City Council is now back in session at nine fifty four P M. All right, agenda item eight, a InfraMark LLC versus the City of Gerald, document number two four dash three zero eight six dash C four eight zero, the four hundred and eighty judicial district court of Williamson County, we have no action. B, B D on partnership number three versus City of Gerald, call number two zero dash zero one two five, dash C four two five, and the four hundred and twenty fifth district court of Williamson County, we have no action. C, ranchwater agreement status and legal advice to counsel, we have no action. D, executive session pursuant to Texas government code section five five one point zero seven four, to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee to wit, city council vacant place four.
I can make a motion to appoint two senators to fill the current vacant city council place four.
Second.
Motion on the floor, and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, unanimous. E, executive session pursuant to Texas government code section five five one point zero seven four, to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer employed to wit, Gerald Economic Development Corporation vacant position, we also have no action. All right, that, and no further business, we are now adjourned at nine fifty five P M.